What's the franchise for you?
It's not changing. One month, year.
Wonderful, I love it.
Oh, really?
Uh huh.
Cassidy will be doing the club.
So, so Artie is...
Good evening and welcome to the April 20th meeting of the Pecosin City School Board. Ms. Spakes will lead the pledge and provide the inspirational reading this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The official flower of the military child is the dandelion. Why? Dandelions put down roots almost anywhere and are almost impossible to destroy. It's an unpretentious plant, yet good-looking. It's a survivor in a broad range of climates. Military children bloom everywhere the winds carry them. They are hardy and upright. Their roots are strong, cultivated deeply in the culture of the military, planted swiftly and surely. They're ready to fly in the breezes that take them to new adventures, new lands, and new friends. Military children are well-rounded, culturally aware, tolerant, and extremely resilient. They have learned from an early age that home is where their hearts are, that a good friend can be found in every corner of the world. They learn that to survive means to adapt, that the door that closes one chapter of their life opens up to a new and exciting adventures full of new friends and new experiences. Written by an unknown author. We just want to say a big thank you to all of our military families for all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassidy. Do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda this evening?
No ma'am, we do not. No ma'am, we do.
All right, great. Let's move on to recognitions. We have, to begin with, the Pecosin City Public School Teachers of the Year, Division Teacher of the Year.
We'd like to recognize and celebrate our outstanding teachers of the year for 2021. Pecosin High School's Teacher of the Year is Ms. Jennifer Herndon. Ms. Herndon is in her 11th year of teaching with six years in Pecosin City Public Schools, where she currently teaches biology, honors biology, and anatomy and physiology. Ms. Herndon earned her bachelor's degree in biology from the University of Mary Washington. She serves as the Science Department Chair for PHS and also as the liaison between the Regional Science Care and Pecosin High School. Additionally, Ms. Herndon has represented PHS as a resident committee member and has co-sponsored the Science National Honor Society for the past six years. It is her goal to push beyond mediocrity in science education and furnish opportunities for all children to aspire to new heights as students of science. Congratulations, Ms. Herndon, PHS Teacher of the Year. Pecosin Middle School's Teacher of the Year is Ms. Amanda Goan. Ms. Goan is in her 20th year of teaching with 15 of those years in Pecosin City Public Schools, where she is currently the school counselor for grades six and seven, as well as the Pecosin Middle School Counselor after her. Ms. Goan earned her bachelor's degree in communications from Newberry College and her master's degree in counseling human development from Radford University. She has served on the PMS Instructional Leadership Team, the VTSS Team, and as the PTO Teacher Representative. At the district level, she has served on the PCPS Health Benefits Committee, the Race Equity and School Community Working Group, and the School Reopening Task Force Committee. Ms. Goan believes it is her responsibility to maintain a safe and inclusive learning environment by creating a student-centered master schedule and ensuring that all students have equal access to school counseling services and support. Congratulations, Ms. Goan, Pecosin Middle School's Teacher of the Year. The Pecosin Elementary School's Teacher of the Year is Ms. Dory Holder. Ms. Holder is in her 16th year of teaching with all 16 years at the Pecosin City Public Schools. She is currently the school librarian for PBS. Ms. Holder has served on the Teacher Advisory Council, the VTSS School Leadership Team, and the Race Equity and School Community Working Group. She is a member of the Virginia Association of School Librarians, the American Association of School Librarians, and the American Library Association. Ms. Holder has delivered several presentations at the annual conference for the Virginia Association of School Librarians. Ms. Holder believes the best part of working at Pecosin involves incredible teamwork and the way our teachers lift each other up. When teachers collaborate and take in the perspective of others, not only do we improve our pedagogy, we also strengthen our teaching team. Congratulations, Ms. Holder, Pecosin Elementary School's Teacher of the Year. Pecosin Primary School's Teacher of the Year and the PCPS Division Teacher of the Year is Ms. Crystal Seismar. Ms. Seismar is in her 22nd year of teaching and her fifth year of teaching for PCPS. She received her bachelor's degree in speech pathology and her master's degree in elementary education, both from the University of Tennessee. Ms. Seismar has served as clinical faculty for student teachers and a mentor for new teachers. She's been a representative on the Division-wide Math Committee, Division Reopening the School Task Force, and the School Leadership Team. Ms. Seismar has developed math curriculum for first-grade teachers aligned with the new Virginia SOLs and provided staff development for colleagues. Outside of the classroom, Ms. Seismar has served as a vacation Bible school teacher, a middle school leader, and a mentor to middle school leaders at her church. She has volunteered with Pecosin Little League and the Pecosin High School Boys' Basketball Team. Ms. Seismar believes in setting high expectations and encouraging students to take ownership of their learning. She wants to instill a love of her learning within her students by modeling her own life while learning as a teacher. Please join me congratulating the PPS Teacher of the Year and the PCPS Division Teacher of the Year, Ms. Seismar.
I'd like to also, we'd like to recognize the Pecosin High School Senior of the Month.
The April Student of the Month is Rand Henji. Rand is now standing in hand, who is very involved at Pecosin High School. He is a member of the Pecosin High School Show Choir Evolution, where he is a band captain. He is also an active member of the school theater productions, as well as a member of the International Thespian Society. He devotes his time to clubs and organizations that help foster school spirit. He is currently the PHS SDA Secretary. As an officer, it is his job to get students involved and promote school spirit, even if that's from a distance with her in the building. In the fall, Rand thanks to a tent Randolph made in college to study psychology and political science. Please join me in congratulating Rand Henji, our April Student of the Month.
Yes, congratulations. And now, I'm looking forward to recognizing the All-State Chorus. Yes, great job, great job. Now, our final recognition is Odyssey of the Mine 2021 State Winners. Well, thank you, that was wonderful. I do, I do miss the fact that we cannot see them here, because it is so much fun to recognize them. All right, we have moving, we're moving on to presentations and reports, and Mr. Tillit will address the 2021 to 2022 planning update.
Thank you very much, and welcome, everybody. What we're used to is me standing up here, starting off with data about the coronavirus spread in our community. But tonight, we're not going to do that. The numbers are holding steady in Pecosin and around the surrounding areas. We are hearing of some surges in other places in the country, but fortunately, on the peninsula, our numbers are holding pretty steady. Our numbers are actually going down in a couple of spots. And if you check our website that we update, Dr. Ryer updates daily, you'll notice that our numbers inside our school system are holding steady as well. Those numbers have not changed significantly over, over time. So, we feel good about where we are. We're excited about the fact that, right now, over 70% of Pecosin students are in school four days a week, learning very effectively. That transition happened with a lot of hard work from a lot of folks, but happened seamlessly. The, uh, removing the checks every day, the temperature checks going in the building every day, all of those things that we were very careful to plan have gone, I would say, very smoothly. So, we're here to report today that one week into our complete transition to in-person learning is a big success. So, the next step is people, I'm starting to get calls and emails about what's happening next year. So, we decided to talk about that. We're going to continue over the next eight weeks with traditional education, as well as the 28, 29% of our students learning virtually, and finish on the 11th of June and have graduation, where we'll graduate around 175 scholars at the Langley Speedway, which is a whole other discussion about how all that came to be. We're so thankful that the folks over at Langley have been such generous partners to us, and it's, it's, the kids are very excited. I've talked to several of them, and the planners of graduation are excited. So, who knows, maybe this is the place we want to graduate in the future. So, we're excited about, about the ending of this school year, but a lot of folks are curious now about what 2021, 22 school year will look like. Families are concerned about, do I need to have a Plan B if we're not back in person next year? And all of those questions are legitimate questions that are coming up. I'm happy to report that the General Assembly through Senate Bill Number 1303 has basically said, we're going to do school next year, 990 hours worth minimum. In order to do 990 hours, you have to have a more traditional school year. The, they have left the door open for that last bulleted point. I won't read it to you, but it basically, and I've, we've lifted it directly from the legislation that was signed by the governor a couple of weeks ago, that says you can have a virtual program as well, that we'll talk about in just a minute, but that we have to be able to toggle, like we've been used to this year, in the event COVID or any other, uh, challenge comes our way. And in the COVID experience, we've learned to do that pretty efficiently in Pecosin. We have students in small groups, certain classrooms, that have to toggle back to a virtual from a possible exposure going on almost every week. So, that could be our reality, again, next year in certain cases. So, the, the key point is that we have to work, again, closely with the local health department to make sure that if we have a, a outbreak in our schools, that we can toggle back to a virtual experience for our kids, so the learning continues. For a small group of kids or larger group of kids, for a short period of time or a longer period of time, the, there is some uncertainty. But our plan for next year is full in-person learning, five days a week, using the schedules that we had pre-COVID, the start times and end times. So, some of the flexibility that we exercised this year during COVID, we hope we don't have to use next year. So, our plan, Plan A, is normal, traditional school next year. With that, the state did leave the caveat that schools may offer for families that, that may want it, a virtual option. Now, what we did this year with our virtual option, which was basically providing our own in-house virtual experience for our kids, we're not going to do. We are going to partner with the Virtual Virginia, which has expanded their programming, and you all may be somewhat familiar with, we've had kids participate in those programs over the years, but they have assured us that they will have ample room for a K-12 experience through Virtual Virginia. Now, where this may become important for families is, let's say there's a family with an immune-compromised individual living in the home, and with, depending on where COVID is at the beginning of next year, a family may feel more comfortable to exercise this option. What it doesn't do is, is tax our instructional staff, because those programs we are going to partner with, Virginia, Virtual Virginia, to offer that curriculum for those families that need it. We'll have a criteria in place so that we know that we're offering it to students who can flourish and excel in those programs. Virtual learning is not good for everybody, but there are certain students who have thrived in a virtual environment, on the college level for years, and some we have seen here in Pecosin this year and around the state and the country. We want to offer that option. We, hard to predict how many students or families might choose to consider that, but we are going to have an application process. We're going to look at teacher recommendations. Obviously, if a student, bar some medical issue, was not successful in virtual this school year, it wouldn't make sense for those kids to be a candidate for a virtual option for next year. But we're going to look at this on an individual basis, and we are planning to offer a virtual experience for those students who need it or can excel in that environment. The cost associated with this, which is not inexpensive, will be paid for out of the next round of CARES funding, federal funding, that we'll talk about at a later meeting as those numbers become finalized. As you'll recall, we've had two versions of CARES money, HESR funding, that came earlier in the school year, one about mid-year, and now we're looking at final numbers for what the third round of this federal funding looks like. And it, from all indications, it'll be the largest pot of money that we will get so far. So, that's exciting news, and it does allow us the opportunity to offer this to some students where it's needed for medical reasons, or certainly if this is a place where they find great success. We are going to be on a fairly tight timeframe, because these slots in Virtual Virginia are going to be a commodity this year, although we've been assured that this, that if you get in under the deadline, you will have, they have availability, but no assurance after the deadline. So, we're going to send out a survey to families, especially families that participated in the virtual experience this year by choice, to see if they are interested in a virtual option for next year. We're going to have a, a kind of a hard date, by June the 18th, to actually have a formal commitment from those families, so then we can secure those slots moving forward. And the deadline is July the 15th, to shore up those slots in what we believe is going to be a, a very sought-after experience, in that this is going to be an option around the state. And the school divisions that I've talked to, I haven't actually spoken with a school leader whose division is talking about doing an in-house virtual, virtual option next year. That doesn't mean that there's not some. Some school divisions may choose, you were raising your hand, is Hampton talking about doing that? So, yeah, I just haven't personally talked to anybody about that, but we decided that with our staffing levels, there's no possibility of running the dual system effectively next We'll continue all of the same health mitigation strategies that we currently have in place. We've made sizable investments in those mitigation strategies, touchless faucets and toilets and the sprayers, and all of those things, that we're going to do everything possible to keep our buildings as safe as possible next school year, including the contact tracing. Now, there's always hope that we get on the backside of this virus, and we can start moving away from these mitigation strategies, and of course, we'll follow the lead, as always, from the governor's office, the CDC, the Virginia Department of Health, and of course, the Virginia Department of Education, that will certainly advise us. The challenge has not changed. We're also hopeful that there's some dialogue around the physical distancing recommendations that have moved from a requirement of six feet down to a recommendation of six feet where possible, and, but allowing the three feet, that has enabled us to have our students in four days a week now. So far, that's still the current guidance. If that still is in place on September the 8th of next year, we will have to invest in additional staff and be very creative about how we offer in certain places, and I'll just say primarily our elementary school, to be honest, because of the space available in order to get a full, a lot of, of students in some of those classrooms at 23, 24, we'll be closer in some cases than three feet. So, we're not going to violate any of the guidance, we're going to follow it religiously. So, as we do that, we may have to be very creative about where classrooms are and who teaches them. We, we do have and are going to set aside some funding from the CARES money to be creative about how we staff that moving forward. We know this is one-time funding, so that's not sustainable. So, one of the, the conversations we've had, just to get in the weeds a bit, is to talk about using attrition moving forward. As we hire, have to hire new staff, we might have to use attrition moving forward if someone retires, not replace that person, maintain the staff member that we have, as COVID leaves us and we can get back to a normal student-teacher ratio. Now, the flip side of that is, the best thing you can do for kids, hire them the best teacher you can find, and then reduce the number, the amount of competition that they, that child has for that teacher's attention, which is a class-size argument. So, our, one of the, the great movements that we would love to be able to sustain is reducing class size. Fewer students learning from our highly qualified teachers is a good movement. So, transportation, of course, we have the same challenges there with the physical distancing in our transportation, on our buses, as well our lunch schedules. Right now, you still, if you, when you remove your mask and are eating, you still are, the guidance is to maintain the six feet of social distancing, which we've done very creatively. For example, students at Pecosin Elementary School, some of them eat in the cafeteria and some of them eat in half of the gymnasium. Just being creative about ways to feed our students in a healthy, safe way, following the guidance, and it's worked very, very well. So, again, hats off to all of the folks, some in this room and the staff around the division, in the creative, flexible thinking. We were in a conversation this morning with the Peninsula Realtors. They were asked, the five superintendents on the peninsula, to just share a little bit about what's going in their, on in their schools, and Mr. Jordan was in on that meeting today, and what we learned, or my takeaway, was the thing that many of us have experienced is a great level of flexibility we've learned to, to have in public education these days. We have to be flexible. We also are taking away a lot of work from our collaboration. Nobody had a playbook going into this year, so we've all created our playbook together. I can't imagine a year where superintendents have spent as much time working together collaboratively, what's working for you, what's working for you, for you, what's working for us, sharing these ideas, because this is all novel, everything's new. And that, we will probably take some of those experiences into the future, certainly technologically. We're in a different place than we were on the 13th of March last year, when schools were closed, and many divisions, Pecosin included, had to find a way to put a, a device in every student's hand so they could continue to learn. We're not going to take those devices back now, we're going to continue to use those devices, it's a great tool. We, we will teach differently moving forward, using a combination of what we did before and what we can do now with these new and exciting innovative tools. Live streaming, no, it's not our best thing for that to be our only way to deliver instruction, where students at home and where students at home and students in school are learning at the same time. That was the way our teachers had to learn to deliver instruction. But will we be able to use it in the future in creative ways? Sure. So these are the takeaways, and so moving forward, we'll do school differently. One of the folks, the presenters today, said we should never waste a good crisis. And there's some logic in that. We will learn a lot, have learned a lot, and moving forward, we'll implement a lot of the things we've learned to the great benefit of our students. Athletics, we plan to, of course, following the guidance of the Virginia High School League and the VDOE and the VDH, we plan to start off the school year playing sports and extracurricular activities. It's been great for our kids. With your wise leadership, we were one of fewer number of districts that decided to engage athletics from the beginning, and our kids have done well. I'm happy to report tonight, we have three teams in the semifinals, two playing tonight. Our field hockey team, hopefully, are winning on our field. And we have, our volleyball team has traveled to LaRae to compete in the semifinals, and our football team will play midday on Saturday over at Bailey Field for the semifinals. So that's an exciting time. Our kids have been cooped up long enough, and we're happy that they're participating and doing it very, very well. Questions? That was a lot of information. I tried to do it as quickly as possible, but we're planning to have traditional school next year. We hope that we can do that without any toggling back, so we'll keep our fingers crossed there. But Plan A is traditional school in Pecosin.
I have two, and they're not related to each other.
Okay.
The first one is if families choose to do Virtual Virginia. I noticed you had on there that if they do Virtual Virginia, they can participate in their activities.
Absolutely.
So the question that I see coming from families that choose to homeschool their children is, if they can do this here, why can't we do this? So I think that's something we need to keep in mind, because I think that's going to filter out this.
It is. There is a distinction on all levels between homeschool and virtual experience. So I personally am not interested in entertaining, of course, it would be totally your decision as a board, homeschool participation for a lot of reasons in interscholastic athletics in Pecosin. Having gone down those conversations for many, many years in my previous district, when school districts around us were considering, and then some actually chose to let homeschool students participate, there are a lot of reasons that we would certainly talk through if that came to our plate. But there's a clear distinction between, and the Virginia virtual program is designed to be a supplement for the instructional part of the student's experience, but not to replace or to disengage the student in any way from the rest of student life in their community. We want them to participate in band and sports and whatever else. We may even be able to offer some singleton opportunities for kids who want to do a virtual experience but then need to pick up a particular traditional course with us. There's lots of opportunities to do that. And again, this is novel and new, so we want to not close any doors. We want to say yes whenever possible, but that's a very good question. In my mind, at least, they're very different concepts.
I agree. The second one I have, and this is just, I know my kids are going to ask, I can see a lot of kids and parents asking, and we might toggle back and forth depending on challenges. So one challenge would be inclement weather or snow days. So is that going to be a plan in the future if we have a snow day, hey, we're virtual for the day? I just have to throw it out there.
Very good question, and you know, I got a lot of feedback on our experimental snow day. Couple of things, just as a point. One is, it now is an option that did not exist prior to COVID. So another takeaway of something that we have now in our tool belt as a possibility. My thinking moving forward is, well, first, let me say this. Instructional time is important, and virtual instructional time is better than no instructional time. And in some cases, done right, it's equivalent. So I'm happy that we have that in our tool belt. Is it going to be our go-to every time? Probably not. What we did last year, we had an opportunity to have what I call a fake snow day. It was not much snow predicted, but it was right on that bubble of probably more than we should send buses and student drivers in. So it gave us an opportunity to pilot, experiment with the virtual snow day. The feedback I got was all over the place. Some folks really liked it. Some of our teachers said we need more prep time to be able to do that. So part of our thinking moving forward, if we are going to use some virtual inclement weather days, is to have our teachers have some special projects that could be done that day. We might be able to do asynchronous snow days. They still count. And have some really cool things. Some of the initiatives we started before I got here that we want to really kick up again now, you know, our project and problem-based learning, where students are tackling a big problem or a big project, that those kinds of things can be done asynchronously on those days. So there's a lot of opportunity with a possible snow day, but I don't know that we're ever going to wipe out the old traditional days when, especially if we have power outages, that would make it certainly not fair to have an assignment or a synchronous plan that day. Some students in the community would not be able to engage it. So we are going to have days, hurricanes, when the power goes out, when, you know, it would be nice to have instruction, but probably won't be able to. So good question, and believe me, I got some good feedback from it.
I thought you did.
Yes.
Will sports be following the traditional schedules of fall?
Good question, Cassidy, and we don't know yet. So we're waiting. The decision, all of those decisions about sports schedules will come from the Virginia High School League. And if you recall, last year, there was a lot of debate that went on on that level with the governor's office and the VDH about landing on when and how and what would be the rules and regulations for sports. And we anticipate that same kind of thing to happen over the summer or early summer in planning and letting us know what the rules of engagement are. But our Plan A is to participate in whatever they allow us to do. Good question.
Is there a pure choice for virtual? You mentioned application process, those to whom it seems appropriate, all these kind of sort of modifiers. Is there a pure choice for?
There is a, yes and no. There is a choice. We're offering it as an option. And that piece of legislation I referenced in the beginning had that as a tagline. The original legislation that was presented, that was then compromised and edited over the debate that happens in the General Assembly, had language in there about requiring divisions to offer a virtual option. That got mitigated down to may offer a virtual option. So our thinking is, we want it out there as an option, which really has been the case for some years. We've had Virtual Virginia for a lot of years. I came from North Carolina. We had the North Carolina Virtual Public School, which was pretty much identical, a consortium of courses that students could engage. It was primarily on the secondary level. What COVID has done is pushed that kind of thinking down even to the little fellows. I'm not sure how applicable it is for the younger students, but we want to have it out there as just an option, primarily for folks who need it medically. But if not, if there's a kid who has flourished in that environment, we want to be able to say to that student or those students, let's give this a shot for you, and we'd use some COVID money to afford it. So I realize it's not a definitive answer in that we're really kind of building this thing as we go. We first want to see how many people would be interested from a survey, because if that's a large number of people, then we have to look at what the financial impact of that would be. And then we have to see, what is the reasons in this survey that you would choose it? Is it because you've been highly successful in this delivery system this past year? Or is it because of a medical challenge in your home? If a parent, for example, has a serious medical issue that would make them more susceptible to COVID and COVID is still around, that may be a legitimate reason why a student would be more comfortable in this environment. But I'm thinking of it as a both and. You really wouldn't want to set a kid up for failure, and so if a kid has not been successful in this program so far, they've not made good grades, it's been a real challenge for them, it wouldn't be prudent for us to go down that path with that student next year. But we're going to look at each case individual. That's why we feel strongly about the application process, so that we're really going to vet every student's rationale for this experience and then find out which ones we want to try it with. The reality is, this could all go away. This option might go away in the future. They may not allow it. Virtual Virginia might not be sustainable. There's a lot of things that could happen moving forward, but it is the future. Chances are, we're going to see virtual options in education and experiences around forever, would be my guess.
Where you got your law degree? Good answer. Very good answer, yes.
A limited number of slots?
I don't know. I mean, what we have heard from just communication with the state superintendent's office is that Virtual Virginia is growing in capacity to accommodate the needs of what they believe, and I think rightfully so, is a segment of our clients in the state of Virginia, educationally, who want this option, who will want it moving forward. That's been a fairly small number, certainly in Pecosin, but there are districts or divisions in the state of Virginia who have used Virtual Virginia with fairly large numbers, I've been told in the past. So this is not new, but they are preparing for a gangbuster year in Virtual Virginia. And again, what's brand new is the K-5 experience, which...
The reason I ask is thinking about, you know, in light of military appreciation, or whatever, if it comes in mid-year, there's no slots, do they want to do virtuals?
That's a very good question. And what we've been told, and we've asked the question, and Dr. Fox, you want to validate this, we've been told that if you're applying under the deadline, before the deadline, then you will be guaranteed the slots you request. I don't know how they can exactly say that. I guess they're kind of rolling the dice a bit about what they're capable of doing, but what we also have been told is they are in the process of hiring more and more virtual instructors as we speak in preparation for what they believe will be a big year for Virtual Virginia. It is a separate organization, but very closely affiliated with the Virginia Department of Education, and they have been promoting it, I will say, as a plausible alternative to traditional education for next year. But we're hopeful that we have the right balance, the number of kids who need it, that we can offer it to them, get them in under the deadline, get them in the program, and try it. They offer a year-long and a semester program. We haven't really landed, we're thinking probably the year-long to keep the disruption from toggling back second semester, but we haven't really landed on that. That'll probably be coming to you at a later meeting with the details of what our experience, based on our survey, what we'll be planning for, the details with Virtual Virginia. But good question. And I hope that we do have availability for a family, like a military family that moves in and says, this would be a great option for us, and we'd like to be able to offer it.
Just a question about the timeline. You said that June 18th would be a date that the parents should formally commit, and then the registration deadline would be July 15th. So...
That's a month, and that gives us an opportunity to do all the things we talked about.
Right. Okay. So maybe if people moved in after June 18th, they could still get in, get there by July 15th? It gives us a little flexibility?
Correct. We can exercise as much flexibility as we want to during that time. That just gives us an opportunity to vet those applications for all the things that we talked about.
Yes.
Looking, you know, did Johnny do a good job in virtual? If he failed all of his courses, we're going to advise Johnny and his parents, virtual is probably not your best bet. And so that month gives us an opportunity to do all of that processes, go through those processes as we then are under a hard deadline with Virtual Virginia of the 15th of July. We don't want to miss a slot from the process we have to go through to make sure our folks are ready and that we're putting the kid in the right space for their learning. But it would give us plenty of wiggle room there as people move in and want to engage that program on our deadlines. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes, it does. And one other question, this is sort of budgetary. You were talking about the costs are covered through CARES Act funding, and then you said the next round of CARES Act funding, is that the one that, like, has to be approved? And then, related to that question would be, if we are still in a social distancing guideline by the CDC of three feet, and the elementary school can't accommodate that, then does the CARES Act funding actual fund additional teachers?
Well, yes, yes and yes. The CARES Act funding will fund staff.
They will, okay.
The problem is, it's not reoccurring funding. So when you hire a teacher, you don't want to turn around a year later and say, sorry, we don't have a job for you. So when I was talking about the details of that have to be worked out, part of if we have to hire additional staff to meet the CDC guidelines, we're going to have to be very creative about how we do that. And one of the ways that, and I've had to live through this in a bad budget cycle in the previous life, you start with attrition. So if we hire an additional fourth-grade teacher is a good example, and fourth grade is probably a really good example, to meet the needs of the social distancing in those fourth-grade classrooms, meaning we create an additional fourth-grade class. So we reduce the numbers down to 18 from 23. Then that extra teacher, we need now, but we won't need when COVID leaves, unless we decide we have a windfall of money and we want our class size to be 18, which I would love to have. That would be a great problem to have. But if we can't afford that, then what we would do is, as an elementary teacher retires or resigns and moves away, we don't replace that teacher. So we use attrition to get back whole again in our financial situation as we move forward. But in the immediate need of trying to accommodate the needs of all of our students who are going to be in school on September the 8th, we're going to have to be creative. One of the things we might have to do is make classrooms out of those pod areas, if you've been in the elementary school. We have some learning going on there right now. We have centers that happen in there. Whenever I visit, I'm amazed at the work that happens there in those areas already. But those could be makeshift classrooms for temporary until we then have this guidance from the CDC change from three feet to no minimum distance for our classrooms. So that was kind of a detailed answer to when I was talking about using attrition to get us back to normal. That's the only way I know to do it and have actually lived through that. It's a cumbersome process, but it does work. But your other question was about...
The words you used were the next round.
The next round, yes, yes. So basically, the CARES funding, or ESSER funding, federal government funding for COVID relief, has come in three buckets. The first bucket, the smallest amount, we got just over $50,000, I believe, early in the fall. We also had, it's important to mention, very generous contribution from their CARES funding from the city, shared with us so that we could do some extraordinary mitigation early on, including put HVAC system in the gymnasium. Otherwise, we would not be able to use the gymnasium now because of the air quality. During COVID, you couldn't have non-circulated air and students in that space. So part of that first batch of money, so in our thinking, when we're talking, we're talking one, two, and three, first batch, the smallest amount. Then mid-year, we got another set of rules and also... Then mid-year, we got another set of rules and also pot of money, and that number was around $206,000. And we again have invested in a lot of mitigation strategies to, to spend that money and use it productively. And now we're in...